Ms. Bill Martini, Bill Martini is joining.
Thank you. We still don't know about Andy.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, it is 5:01 and we will now call our June 9, 2020 Town of Windermere Council meeting into order. We will, I'll make note for the record that we do have a virtual quorum in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order that expires June 30th. We are without Councilman Williams at this point, we will see if he joins us. We'll go ahead and I'm hoping Councilman Martini has a flag for us so we can go ahead and say the pledge.
I actually restricted it to where you cannot.
Ah, it's smart.
Change your background.
Yeah, based on, okay, well, we will, we will view the flag as best we can then and we can go ahead and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. So this is definitely one of the things that we're going to have to fix in Zoom world if we're going to continue any virtual meetings. Also, if you would join me for the invocation. Father, as always, we pray for your guidance and wisdom as we need to rule or bring our council together to serve our community and our town. We look for your guidance in these ever challenging times. We hope that soon we'll have a vaccine for COVID. And that we have order and peace around the world as we seek to listen to others and those who have different grievances and thoughts. Keep our first responders safe as they serve in that capacity and all of our law enforcement and those around the world that serve to keep us safe and free, amen. We'll now have our three minute public comment. Any of those who wish to speak? For the record, if you would put your name and address in the chat box, I will call on you. And at this time, Town Manager Smith will read previously submitted comment from the public and I would like to at this point recognize that Councilman Williams has joined us.
Thank you.
It is 6:03 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The question was sent over to, I believe, Dorothy or Diane prior to the five o'clock cutoff time. The, it's a three-part question. First part being, has our city council and police department ever reviewed the task force findings for effective 21st century policing developed during the Obama administration? The link was attached. If we did review, did we adopt any of that findings, any of the findings? And if we did not review, can we commit to reviewing the report and implementing as applicable? So those are the questions posed.
Any other public comment at this time? All right, see none. We will move on, council, we have our town council meeting minutes for May 12, 2020. Looking for a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilperson Sap. Second.
Second.
Second from Councilperson Williams. Any discussion, council? Begin voting with Councilperson Andrew.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. I think Bob is muted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
For the, for the record, Bob, we just go ahead and you gave a vote in the affirmative, right?
Correct.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Our resolution ordinances, this is for our approval and first reading. Ordinance number 2020-02, this is our Duke franchise agreement extension. An ordinance granting to Duke Energy Florida LLC, doing business as Duke Energy, an electric utility right-of-way utilization franchise prescribing the terms and conditions relating to the occupancy of municipal street and rights of way in the town of Windermere, Florida. For the purpose of providing electric service, providing for separability of provisions and providing an effective date. This is our first reading for ordinance 2020-02. We have, we will have a public hearing at our next meeting for this item. Does council have any comments at this point? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to ordinance number two, which is ordinance number 2020-03. This is the South Florida Water Management District Water Conservation Ordinance. An ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to water conservation repealing and replacing section 5 dot 03 dot 04 of Article 5 of the town's land development code to provide an updated water shortage plan consistent with the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District. Providing the intent and purpose, providing definitions, providing for applicability and providing for the declaration of water shortage or water shortage emergency. Providing for variances, providing for enforcement, providing for penalties and providing for codification. Providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances and providing for separability and an effective date. Again, for ordinance number 2020-03, this will be our first reading. We'll have a public hearing at our next scheduled town council meeting. Any comments, council, on ordinance number 2020-03? See none. Our next first reading is ordinance number 2020-04. This is South Florida Water Management Water Shortage Ordinance. An ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to water conservation repealing and replacing article, that's going to make it 14 of the town's land development code titled Water Conservation Rules to provide for updated conservation goals consistent with the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District. And to be titled Water Conservation Year-Round Landscape Irrigation Measures, Variances, Enforcement, Penalties. Providing the intent and purpose, providing definitions, providing for the applicability. Providing for the declaration of a water shortage or water shortage emergency. Providing for variances, providing for enforcement, providing for penalties and providing for codification. Providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances, including separability and an effective date. That is ordinance number 2020-04, which we will also have a public hearing for at our next regularly scheduled town council meeting minute, or town council meeting. Council, any comments on ordinance 2020-04? See none, thank you very much. We will move on to Agenda Items E, other items for consideration. Up in front of us, as you guys know, we have our Town of Windermere Annual Pancake Breakfast. Typically scheduled for July 4th. We wanted to have town council provide for input and guidance for the town staff as we begin to enter in to the time to plan for that, actually a little behind the time to plan for that. We were not aware that we were going to be going to to Phase 2 reopening, which gives us a little more leeway, not a lot, but does give us a little more leeway, so we wanted to have a conversation about town council's thoughts on whether we should hold that event or whether we should postpone or cancel that event. At this point, I will leave it to council, so any thoughts or comments?
Is there any way to pre-sell the tickets ahead of time? You know, therefore you can kind of restrict, you know, so you don't have large crowds coming at eight o'clock, for example, maybe spread them out.
We, we can do it through possibly Eventbrite.
I wouldn't sell them.
Councilman Martini.
I was going to say, I wouldn't sell them too far in advance, depending on how Phase 2 goes. You know, it looks, it looks promising, but on the other hand, it might be, might be too early to call, like, maybe we should wait another week or two. But I, I would prefer to have the, the event, if we can, if things are going smoothly, I think we can figure out a way to do it so that it's safe and, you know, we have the proper distancing and I think the town needs a celebration of sorts, so if we can do it safely, I'm for it.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. Council.
I will, my thoughts on it are, let's go ahead and plan for it. I don't think that selling tickets ahead of time is going to work with Eventbrite. We can maintain the distancing in the queue line. If we had need to change it to a later date, then we're set up for it. And we can make that read a week ahead of time, but at least we're prepared. And if we need to delay it a week or so, then we can do that later, but at least we're set up for it. I would love to sit, nothing better than to say let's go ahead with the 4th of July and have our annual pancake breakfast.
I've not heard from Councilperson Andrew or Williams, any thoughts?
I'm on mute, Councilmember Williams, that was not on purpose.
Councilperson Williams, go ahead, thank you.
Sure it wasn't, I was trying to unmute myself and like, ah, Robert. I agree with Councilperson McKinley, I mean, I think we should plan for it, I'd really like to see it happen. But I think we just need to be, you know, cognizant of the, the numbers. How are we going to flatten back out or, because we've had such a big spike moving into Phase 2 already. You know, I'd love to see it happen, I don't think the crowd, we'll have a crowd problem. Because it's normally spread out every time I've worked it in the past. So I think we should plan, plan for it and if we have to cancel it, we will.
Thank you, Councilperson Williams, Councilperson Andrew, any thoughts? Robert, can you unmute Councilperson Andrew?
Yeah, I don't know why it's once I am mute.
Yes, well, hang on, as soon as he unmuted you, you were remuted, so hang on, we'll get you out of the penalty box here real quick.
I will, I will unmute you, I think that's the issue is that once you guys mute and then.
Am I on?
There you go.
Excellent, okay. I would too like to see the event happen, I'd like to volunteer at it if we have, you know, people who are hesitant to volunteer, I'm fine with that. I, you know, could we, if we happen to buy all of the supplies and the event doesn't go on and we can't use them because there's some spike or something, could we donate them to a food shelf or food pantry or some other place, you know, that would be something that would be valuable too. And, you know, maybe we could, if we really wanted to find the towns, if we wanted to assess sensitivity to holding the event, you know, we could put maybe a poll out on, on social media or something like that to, to see if we want to gauge interest with our, with our neighbors.
Yeah, we, we typically donate to the Edgewood Children's Ranch, the pancake batter.
Great.
So I feel that, I feel that council is the, the barometer, especially at this point, because we do not have a ton of time. It does take some planning and we have to order the grills and such. So there's a couple of things that I do want us to factor in here, so if we are to hold the event, I believe that we need to be at least cautious in how we do that and that we follow the guidelines that are presented to us for Phase 2, which is essentially 50 people at a time. Or may, I don't know, we could have it, we could have extra tables outside. The way that I've seen a lot of the churches do this in terms of their reopening, which are a little bit bigger numbers. But they actually have been using Eventbrite, so that way they're able to kind of just control the flow a little bit. So how many people they have per their spacing requirements. So that's, that's just some thoughts. It is on a Saturday, on Saturday, we normally do have a little bit of a bigger, a bigger attendance factor. I'm, actually, you know, I say that, but I think it's a little bit just the opposite, I think people will tend to travel, so I think the last time was on a Saturday, it wasn't as well attended as it is sometimes during the middle of the week, but either way, let's plan, if, if council wants to move forward on it, let's go ahead and work within the guidelines that we have. So we're, you know, being a good example as well, because I don't want to get ourselves in a situation where we're telling folks they can't rent out town hall for more than 50 people and then we have 200 there or something, so just my two cents. Any further thoughts?
Do we need a motion?
I don't.
No.
You know, we're just giving guidance here, so, I mean, I think that if, if, if you are all in agreement that are, then our guidance would be from council, that we would schedule and hold the event, make the appropriate plans for said event. And, and do all that we can to work within the CDC guidance for Phase 2.
Yeah, those, those guidelines are always adjustable and we can adjust the, our reaction to it up until, you know, the day of, so if we go ahead and do the planning, then we're all set, then if we need to restrict or we can add more, then we can go ahead and plan that as we go. But I'm all in favor of, let's go ahead and hold it on 4th of July, or at least schedule it for then and adjust accordingly.
All right, and see no further comment or thoughts? That'll be, that'll be council's direction to staff at this time. Begin working on your volunteer requests at this point, because we may miss out on some of our our typical volunteer pool, possibly due to, you know, illness, age, anything that may be a bigger concern in terms of COVID for some folks, so just FYI. And item two is garage sale restrictions, say, so during the initial COVID event, from an executive perspective, we stopped having garage sales. The question has, came up with Phase 2 opening again. That is something that we likely could reopen with our normal limitations. So we wanted to go ahead and bring that to councils and get your approval or thoughts on the garage sales for the town.
My thought is to go ahead and proceed with them and let them have them, of the many yard sales I've seen, I haven't seen very large groups in any of them, other than for a short period of time. Usually you may have 10 people at them, but at the most. But I think we need to go ahead and open it back up and let them have their yard sales.
Thank you, Councilperson McKinley, any further thoughts or comments from council?
Agreed.
Agreed.
I agree.
Go for it.
All right, well, that sounds like pretty clear direction. We will go ahead and proceed in that direction, thank you guys for all of your input. Any no further thoughts on those items, and we'll bring these items to you as they come up. You know, obviously, some of these, some of these decisions were made, you know, during an incident, an emergency situation. So as we unwind these, if, if it's at all possible, we'll certainly be bringing them to council, because that's an opportunity to get, make sure that we do the right thing and go in the right direction with full consent. Up next are Mayor and Council Liaison Reports. Councilman McKinley, do you want to start?
Well, we are having a Parks and Rec Committee meeting this Thursday at five o'clock at Town Hall. And nothing other than that to report, so we are looking at rescheduling the 10K, 5K, the Run Among the Lakes for October. We're going to be discussing that Thursday also.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Williams.
I've reached out to my committee HPV, they are, I haven't heard back on getting back on track. We've kind of taken a hiatus with all the shutdowns, so as soon as I hear something back, we'll get a meeting planned.
Sounds good, thank you, sir. Councilman Sap.
LRP will be meeting again in a couple of weeks. And then you will have the, the projects notes are in the agenda there.
Great, thank you for those. Did you, you guys had your LRP meeting last month as well and that went well?
I believe we had a council meeting since then and I, I'm pretty sure the only thing that was on was the Pavilion, from my recollection.
DRB, DRB had their meeting.
Oh, that's right, I apologize, guys, I was thinking DRB, my mistake.
Yeah, I did sit in on that meeting and present, so maybe that's what you were thinking about. And of course, that subject will, with the Pavilion, will be on our workshop coming up in the end of the month here.
Sounds good. Councilman Martini.
Well, you already covered the Pavilion, so we've got another DRB meeting coming up June 16th. And so we'll see what happens there. And as far as the police liaison goes, I just want to thank Chief and all the WPD for their hard work. And especially for the the high school seniors parade, it was a great event. Well attended, that, that the town came out in force to cheer on the graduates. So it was sort of like their prom and skip day and graduation all rolled together, it's been a tough year for those kids. They were all born right after 9/11 and they all graduated during a pandemic.
We're going to.
They, they made the best of it, so thank you, Chief and, and Mayor and Robert Smith for supporting that, it was a great event.
That'll, it's going to be one tough generation and congratulations to your lovely daughter Haley on her graduation and all the class of 2020, I want to thank all the town staff for making that parade possible. As well as our volunteers that helped out to make all these great things happen and, you know, it's not a it's not the same, but it certainly is an event of recognition and we certainly look forward to their contributions that seem sorely needed these days, so we wish them Godspeed.
Me too, we, we got a lot of, there's been a lot of positive input about the banner, also with the students and people are saying we should do that every year, if possible. I think that'd be a good little tradition to start. So, thank you for that also.
We did, we, we actually talked about maybe making it a tradition, we'll see where we're at as we get a little closer in 2021.
We need to leave a space for one or two other kids, because there's always somebody that gets left out.
We're going to, we're going to do stick figures for anybody who doesn't get their stuff in, Councilperson Andrew.
With those banners, what, what becomes of those? I mean, do you do like bidding to see who wants to buy it for their kids and we raise, do a fundraiser, I'm just curious.
We could cut them up and give everybody their own piece.
Yeah, anyway, I just, just, I hadn't thought about that until this point. So, um, let's see, Liaison Report, so Ways Committee did not meet this month, they didn't publish an agenda in time. There haven't been discussions, to my knowledge, regarding whether or not they'll meet during the summer. I cannot understand, you know, if they would go on a temporary hiatus just because of, you know, what we know that students are dealing with at this point and, you know, all the things they've had to overcome, but anyway, if there's something more to report next time, we will. Downtown Business Committee, which we know is on hiatus still, there are still, as we know from past meetings, there are still efforts to support our local businesses. One of which was recently launched on our website, if you go out to the town website and then look under the residents tab, you can see a business directory. I think there are 31, 32, something around the number of businesses that have participated and submitted their information. And so we're hoping to, and to my knowledge, all of the links have been translated over into the website, so it's operational. It might have some tweaks here and there, if we can put in some more visual interest like logos or things like that, but it's ready to use and promote and so we can tell our residents that we have town businesses listed out there, should they want to become patrons of those businesses and then I'm hoping that we can also encourage other businesses who haven't yet submitted their information to be able to show them that this tool is operational and what it actually looks like and that it's legitimate and then that it's free to them and hopefully they'll participate too, so we can connect more of our residents with our local businesses. Knowing that many people want to show their support for those who have wanted to serve our community in particular. The Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board will be meeting next Monday, that will be a virtual meeting. I can provide information about that, but if you were to do a Google search or go out to Orange County's website, you can also find the information on how to participate in that meeting. Public is always welcome, you can always have your, you know, public comment period and the agenda is out there, although usually it's not too terribly detailed, I can tell you that, I think there's a lot of discussion about projects, they want to get back on track regarding lake water quality and that kind of management issue, more environmental issues on the lakes. But I know there's always discussion about some of our safety issues on the lakes and Bird Island usually comes up, so those residents who are interested in that, I encourage you to attend Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board meeting, which will be next Monday at 5:30 PM. And lastly, the Tree Board is meeting next week on Thursday at 5:00 PM. And the agenda for that will be posted on the website if it is not already yet posted.
Excellent, excellent, Councilperson Andrew, and thank you for all of your efforts, especially with the, with the business community outreach. Certainly good to see our, our town businesses reopened and helping us return to to some, some type of normal, I don't want to use the new normal phrase, it drives me a little crazy, so, you know, this is a, a phase that we've got to work through and do the right things to make sure that we are successful long-term, so I know that we will do that. From, briefly from my perspective, I want to take a few minutes and first of all, I want to thank, thank staff for their continued perseverance and creativity as, as we as we do work to serve all town residents and continue our responsibilities and all the duties that go along with that. And certainly want to appreciate all of their efforts. I don't think I've heard the word no once during the past few months, as we have, you know, tried really hard to keep our staff safe, keep our first line responder safe, yet maintain a level of service to the highest level that we possibly can. I also want to thank Chief Ogden for his words. And in his, his take on where Windermere stands in terms of all that is going on. I think that, that being out in front of that those issues and being mindful of those issues and training to the highest degree, so we so we are, are ready and trained and we put all of our efforts into not making those mistakes, I certainly appreciate it's gone into building a department that is, you know, full, full of high integrity police officers who want to do the absolute best every single day. I see them all, I talk to them all and I know that that's the direction and leadership, not only from our police department, but from, from our town and the mission of all of our residents, so I know that Chief Ogden will have some comments to make as we get around to him as well. But I want to make sure that everyone knows that our officers have the town's full support. So, appreciate all of that. We'll go to staff reports now, Town Manager Smith.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First thing is that we filled out all of our reimbursables for the CARES Act. The total amount that we're looking to get back is about $11,371. Which is really not that much, but again, for the computers that we purchased and also the four hand sanitizing stations, we're looking for reimbursement. With the amount of money that Orange County has, hopefully we'll be able to go ahead and get that taken care of quickly. As opposed to what we've typically had to go through with DEM. Again, we had the last virtual town hall last week, last Thursday. We will do more as more information comes up, but right now we're going to go on a little hiatus, especially. You know, we went out with a bang with the last Thursday one, no pun intended. So as you can tell, I've been scrolling through this entire meeting, just keeping an eye out just in case something would happen, but. I'm glad something hasn't happened just yet, but it's a learning curve. The after action questionnaire has been sent out to staff and also the council members. If you haven't received it, please let me know. Please fill those out. That's going to be included in the after action report. I want to get the good, the bad, the ugly of how we. Were able to react to this pandemic, what we did right, what we did wrong during the pandemic, and then what we should probably look out for. In case we have to go back into a quarantine situation or have to deal with another pandemic sometime down the road. We've been working with Orange County's after action. I know that chief's been sitting on the executive policy committee. We're also working with OSER. And then also Orange County with a lot of their evaluations and their after action reports as well. Again, the graduation parade, I think was a great success. Not only is the banner a great idea, but also the parade's a great idea. It's just a way of the kids just to. Drive around and be acknowledged for all the, the big achievements that they've accomplished throughout the year. DRB, as we said before, will be meeting on the 16th. We have three variances that'll be up for discussion. The workshop on the 23rd, there was a question that was posed to me, what is the, going to be the. Topic? It is going to be the Windermere Pavilion that is proposed to be in town square. That is something that is going to be privately funded. Either through Rotary or other charitable organizations or possibly through committee support as well. So what they're looking for is an approval of the concept for them to start fundraising and that's what we'll be discussing on June 23rd. The budget you'll have in your hands by July 1st is pretty much completed. I'll be working with council member Williams. We're just working on healthcare benefits. And then trying to get some DOR numbers and some numbers for the new facilities as it relates to the public works area. But once we have that locked in, I'll shoot it over for council member Williams's approval. And then I'll shoot it out to all council members because per the charter, I have to get it out to you 90 days prior to the actual start of the new fiscal year. Temporary facilities, they will be up by July 17th. That week will be moving into our new temporary facilities. Right at this time, right now, we're selling a lot of items that we're not going to be moving. They're either too old, obsolete. So we're doing a lot of purging right now. So if you haven't been to the auction website, please go to it. We've done a great job. Lillian's been handling that and we've sold over $16,000 worth of items. You'd be surprised that people are buying those chairs that we all believe are so comfortable. So we're hopefully going to be raising some more funds to offset the costs of us transitioning to temporary facility. And then moving back to the new facility. Everything's on, on time, on schedule. So the link to the auction site is on the town website. And it's on the town Facebook page. So make sure you take a look at it. The. New Windermere app, again, that was a testament to Diane. Make sure that you download that. That gives you push notifications that. If something were to occur, we'd be able to go ahead and get it out to you. I think a lot of people have some positive feedback from that. And it's something that I think everybody should download. You know, the one complaint we always get is we weren't notified. We didn't know about this. Even though we're on pretty much every media platform you can think of, this just is an additional one for them to. Be updated on what's happening in the town. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Town Manager Smith. My video is stopped. So, but I think I can hear and everybody can hear me. If not, I would ask that council person McKinley will. Finish the rest of the meeting if you should lose me by chance. Next up, Police Chief Ogden.
Hey, go. Yep. Yeah, yeah, don't unmute me there. Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, I would definitely like to reiterate that Windermere app is a great asset for us to have for the residents. So please make sure you sign up for that. We are keeping up despite not doing the virtual town halls. We still have daily meetings at the daily executive group with Mayor Demins to stay on top of the COVID. We share those with you folks and it's going out. I'm not sure what, how the new platform will, we'll share information to go out with that, but maybe some of, maybe through some of the apps. Officer King is off his training status and we are on full service with PD, which is excellent. So congratulations once again to him. We actually did some training today, had to get him qualified. The curfew was lifted. We posted that the other night. So I think everybody was happy to see that. So there is new curfew restrictions in Orange County. Or the unincorporated or the incorporated areas as well. Off duty was a little bit busy this weekend despite we had a lot of rain. We had, we had several calls for service there. Officer Ogle, Ogle Tree was actually working that. So. He, he came in contact with a lot of individuals. So we'll continue to do that. As the rain goes away and the summer comes around, I'm sure it's going to be a lot more busy. The monthly report was sent out, I think it was yesterday. And if it wasn't, I'll, I'll take a look at that and make sure we get that posted along with the email to town council. And we do have the event cops and boppers was already staged for September 19th. That's been staged for entire year. So we'll talk about that and maybe ask some of you guys if, if we're interested in proceeding with that, or I know there's lots of events that are trying to get rescheduled. So we'll keep that on the calendar for now and we'll kind of move forward. We know that every city and every town is unique, you know, and there's always different oversight options as it goes on, as you guys know. I think town council and I and every police department is getting lots of information, lots of requests. Lots of different recommendations. So we will stay the course and continue to look at those things. As we come along, I'm working with lots of different organizations, all the chiefs, all the different groups. So we're looking at everything and. People don't sometimes realize what goes on behind the scenes behind police departments, but we adapt and change and improvise and when we need to. Modifications to policy that goes on pretty much routinely almost every month, to be honest with you. There's so many in there. You can go back and look at the changes and. Sometimes they're as little as a grammar mistake, a grammar oversight, or sometimes they're, they're big. So we'll continue to look at all things and. Bring those to your attention. So take a look at the emails I sent you guys so you can review everything that we done. And of course, everything is posted on the website as well. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Chief Ogden. Public Works Director Scott Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad everybody's here and doing well. It was a tough times and we'll get through it and agreed. The virtual town hall meetings were excellent idea and kudos for chief and Robert and. Of course, Diane for putting those on. I think those were very important for the town and the residents as well as. The rest of us staff members as well. You'll, as Councilman Sap mentioned, the projects meetings notes are posted. Projects have been continuing moving forward throughout this. These times and we're on track and on schedule. We're seeing some draft plans come out in the next 30 to 60 days on some of them. All going well. As chief mentioned, we did get quite a bit of rain over the weekend. We had a couple of public works employees coming in. Moving the dirt around on the dirt roads as, as we do every time it rains or the wind blows. So. And thanks for PD for supporting and keeping us in contact with us and letting us know that. Otherwise. You're going to see some new signs on the new decorative posts are going to be installed on Park Avenue here in the next couple of weeks. And everything else is moving forward. I think we got a lot done during this time and we're seeing the effects of it now with. Flowers blossoming and maybe this will be just a positive move forward.
Thank you, Scott. And I do want to thank the public work staff for being out on, I guess it was Sunday after we had quite a bit of weather come through. Saturday night. That was a pretty, pretty eventful, powerful storm. I was very pleased to see that we did not get the straight line winds that we did a few years back. Because we lost so many trees and there was so much damage. As well as two or three tornadoes that were in Orange County as well. So. Thank you again for having those guys out. Makes a, makes a big difference filling in all the washouts. Councilor Ramos, any thoughts from you this, today?
Hi, Mayor. Just one thing I want to mention is, and I know you alluded to it for the phase two recovery plan. The ability for the town to use communication media technology for the meetings has been extended through June 30th. Because I know I saw some questions on the screen come up in the chat box about that.
Yes, thank you. And I believe it is our intent to continue to utilize. That until June 30th. Is that so, Robert? Is that we agreed upon?
Yes, sir. The only one that, we typically are not allowing any meetings to occur or rentals to occur if we cannot guarantee that less than 50 people are going to be attending that meeting. That's why we're allowing Parks and Recreation to meet on Thursday. But yes, we're going to be holding all of our meetings virtually until that expiration. But I do believe, I just think that they're going to be extending that a little bit too, probably for another 90 days.
They, they may. I saw a hybrid, which is essentially you can have up to 50 people in person at your in-person quorum meetings with a. With, with plans and a method for those over the 50 attending to join virtually. So I think there is a hybrid plan as well. So we can. We'll, we'll work that out as we can get down the road here. But those, those executive orders, you know, they'll probably, probably come out on the, you know, 29th. It's been going. All right. Anything else for the good of the order council? Staff?
No, sir.
See nothing. We will, we will end our town council meeting for the town of Windermere in record time at 5:42 or sorry, 6:42 PM. I thank you all for your service and we will, we'll meet shortly for our workshop.
Thank you all. Bye.